Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee meeting of April 10th, 2019. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting on April 24th. It will also be available for viewing on SMC's website. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee, and it is at the top of our agenda at each regular meeting. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in addressing the committee. Those wishing to do so in the future should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting. You'll be recognized for up to three minutes. The next item on our agenda is chairperson's and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Dr. McGee?
Yes, I'd like to report that I and Lindsay Heffernan attended a seminar last Saturday in Marlboro on school start times. It was aimed at implementation. It was districts that had already weighed the evidence, felt that there was a very strong case to be made for later start times for the adolescents who were going to middle and high school. And they were going over methods that successful districts had used to implement this. And so I think it's hopeful that it's being successfully done elsewhere, and it's catching on. There are many more districts that are adopting this, and that's going to make implementation a lot easier than it otherwise would be. And we even heard from a district that had previously initiated a later school start time, got so much pushback that they backpedaled and canceled it. And they are back at bat. They are going to find another way to get a later start time for their adolescents. So all very positive, and I think it'll contribute to this project as we move forward.
Well, thank you for that update, and thank you for attending. I'm sure that knowledge will help guide our process as we begin in the next few weeks to consider our own start time here in Shrewsbury. Colleagues, anything further on our members' reports? Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Mr. Palich. I have a few items, but I actually would like to have Ms. Clodder start with an item based on a program she attended recently.
Before our last school committee meeting, I was able to see just the first part of the "From My Heart" opportunity. It was a speaking event that featured artwork from our Shrewsbury artists, you'll see on the front cover, and some writing from not only Shrewsbury writers, but adolescent writers at the high school level in Auburn and Grafton and Worcester as well. It was a nice opportunity sponsored by the Rotary for kids to come together and meet other like-minded students from other districts, and it was my pleasure to see all of those people together with a local author as well. So my thanks go out to Studeen, who organized the event, and Judy Berman, who made me very welcome at my first opportunity to see it.
I believe this is the third year that this program's been happening, and it's been quite successful, and looking forward to, again, providing opportunities for our students to share whether that's their writing or their artwork. So appreciate the support of the Rotary Club for that. Some other pieces I didn't want to mention, in terms of some recent happenings in the district, we had several musical groups participate in the Massachusetts MICA Festival over the past weekend. And we'll be publicizing this, but we had several choruses and bands who earned either silver or gold medals in the competition, so we're pleased about that. We also had the Destination Imagination teams who moved on to the state level. And I'm informed that several of the teams placed in one came in first place at the elementary level, and we'll be publicizing specifics about that in the near future. Looking, some of those teams are looking at the possibility of going on to the global competition in Tennessee. You recall there was a team last year, the last couple of years, that have done that. So the Destination Imagination program continues to be very successful. And then our high school speech and debate team participated in the Massachusetts State Championship this past weekend, and several students won individual state championships. We'll be bringing them to the school committee later in the spring. And for the second time in four years, the team were the state champions in speech and debate. So continuing their remarkable run of success in the speech and debate here within Massachusetts. So congratulations to all those students and coaches who were involved. Also want to let the committee know and the community know that we had a very successful event sponsored by the Colonial Fund last week where Lynn Lyons, who is a therapist who speaks on the topics of anxiety for students and families, she had a presentation in the afternoon for staff, which was a part of their professional development opportunities on early release day. In the evening, she presented to parents and community members. Some staff actually returned for the evening, which signals that they thought it was well worth the time in the afternoon. I was able to attend that. It was actually very well-attended in the evening, and very important topic, and I thought her approach and what she suggested can help inform some of the work we're trying to do in these areas as well. And then finally, I did earlier this evening send, we received a copy from UMass, Collins Center at UMass-Boston, the final report. They had presented the draft to the school committee at a previous meeting. It's, so it's been passed along. We'll make sure we post that to the website under tonight's meeting materials. I know that Ms. Clodder's already found one typographical error, so we'll make sure that it's totally clean before we post it to the website. But they have followed through with their commitment for that final report, which I'll be referencing later this evening in one of the agenda items. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Moving along with our agenda, we're actually going to take the next item out of order. We're going to go to a time-scheduled appointment with the Public Facilities Division of the Department of Public Works. By way of background, Ms. Angela Snell, who's our Director of Public Facilities here in Shrewsbury, and Mr. Keith Baldinger, Public Buildings Division Manager, will discuss the recent reorganization of the Public Facilities Division of the Shrewsbury Department of Public Works, and describe upcoming major building repairs at Shrewsbury Public Schools sites. So welcome to you both. We're happy to have you here.
Thank you. We're happy to be here. We wanted to just give you a little bit of an overview of our division, and then we'll get into some of the projects that we're working on. So just so everyone knows, the Public Facilities Division was formed for the town four and a half months ago as part of the Department of Public Works. Public Facilities consists of two divisions, Public Buildings and Parks and Recreation and Cemetery. So most of you knew there were two separate departments. Now we've merged together. Keith is the Division Manager for Public Buildings, and Kevin Esposito is the Division Manager for the Parks and Cemetery Division. And I just wanted to also say that Keith and I have been enjoying working with the school department and the leadership team. It's been great to get to work more closely, especially for me, get to work more closely with the school department now being involved with buildings, especially working with Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins. I gave you an org chart of our division, so I just wanted to tell you about the staff that we have. And again, I feel lucky. I inherited the Public Building staff to join us with Parks and Cemetery. On the Public Building side, we have three, well, Keith's the Division Manager. Then we have three Assistant Superintendents for Public Buildings. One is the Custodial Supervisor, one is our Maintenance Supervisor, and then we have a Plant Manager at Shrewsbury High School. We have 12 custodians, we have two part-time custodians, and then we have five maintenance craftsmen who are also tradesmen, the plumbers, electricians, things like that. On the Park side, we have the Division Manager, then we have a Parks and Cemetery Foreman, we have a Recreation Supervisor, we have two maintenance craftsmen, and then we have five part-time laborers that work like April through November. For the Building side, we're responsible for 19 buildings, which consists of the Town Hall, the Fire Station, Police Station, the Library, and all the public schools. All of the schools have at least one day custodian, with the exception of Parker Road Preschool. That's something that we are looking into, hopefully getting funding for that in the future, having at least a part-time custodian there. The types of work that the Public Buildings Division does is cleaning the buildings, lunch duty at the schools, you know, any kind of maintenance, replacing light bulbs, plumbing issues, electrical issues, changing filters, roof repairs, things like that. And the Parks Department, the work that they do for the school department is maintaining the school athletic fields. They do the lining for all the scholastic events at the high school and now at the middle school. So now I'm going to turn it over to Keith to talk about some of the building projects and HVAC things.
Well, first of all, thanks for having us tonight. It's a pleasure to be back in the town of Shrewsbury, working here again. One of our biggest drivers for work for our maintenance staff is the HVAC systems in the building. We have almost buildings, when you have almost a million square feet of building, I mean, there's a lot of people to keep cool and warm and whatever. So because we have about 7,000 people a day through these buildings at least, plus our municipal buildings with the residents coming through and all that. So it's a big task for us to keep on that, and we spend a lot of money with contracted services, contracted HVAC companies to keep that stuff running. And this year in our budget, we're asking for an in-house HVAC tech, which we hopefully will help us run much more efficient buildings and stay on top of problems regularly, have somebody on staff that will know the history and learn the buildings as they come in. Whereas we bring a contractor in, the first thing they do is figure out, you know, they have to learn the building and learn what's wrong. So having somebody on staff will help us a lot with that. We do have terrific staff anyways. I have electricians and plumbers that work on HVAC units all the time. Just, you know, they try to diagnose issues in-house, and they do a lot for us, but often we have to go out, so need another tradesman in place. And so HVAC is also our biggest, if you look at these major building repairs, you'll see a lot of HVAC line items. All of our schools work well as far as that goes, but we have many outdated control systems. And so we're working to update that stuff. The high school is the biggest one. It has obviously the most square feet, and it has the most issues. Some of the other projects we're doing, over the summer, we'll be redoing the Patton School and Oak Middle School gym floors, which is something that we do every few years. Floral Street School, which is not on this list, we'll be doing some carpet in that building. We have a count, I think we'll be able to do a fair amount, probably all the hallways and maybe some of the administration area in that building. And then we're looking at a product that hopefully we can do some in-house work over time to stretch our dollar on some of that. We have some capital, our only one capital project this year is removing some fuel tanks that we no longer use at Oak Floral and the high school. And we have a roof replacement at Parker Road, which is another issue ongoing. We chase a lot of roof leaks there, and it's seen the end of its life. And then this list is probably about 10% of what we actually do, so we have a lot of other little projects that we're doing around, and we're trying to make changes with security issues that we have in some of the buildings and just work with the school, make sure that we're giving them a building that works well for them, and it's clean and operating. And that's our goal.
We also gave you a copy of our Public Facilities newsletter. We sent that, we just started that. We sent it to all the staff. So that kind of gives you a little history of some of the projects that we completed recently, just a little overview on that. So any questions?
Thank you both certainly for the presentation, and we appreciate on behalf of the school department all the work that you guys do for all of our facilities and all of our students. Colleagues, questions and comments? Mrs. Fritz?
Just for the committee's knowledge, we had our Building Committee meeting last night, and John Mazziello, due to family issues, has stepped off the committee. Bob Cox is now rolling into the Community section, and Keith is now our new addition to the Building Committee with the Public Building. So welcome. He gets to go to all those meetings now, too. And just thank you, because I recently was with a colleague at work who had not been at Shrewsbury before, and they were like, oh, that building must be brand-new. It's in such good condition. I think we take care of the buildings. We build these expensive buildings, but we also take care of them so that they have a long life. So thank you.
Mrs. Consano?
I also like to echo the thanks. Custodians are an essential part of a school building, and my time in various buildings, you see the connection they have with students. They're very popular. Yeah. And so, thank you. I think you spoke about the people and the staff, and I'm sure they're equally responsive as we're hearing about how beautiful buildings are. So thank you so much for coming, and I'm wondering if that newsletter that you put in the packet, is that something that's available to the public?
The first one we just did is an internal one, so we're debating whether our next addition will be more of a public one.
I would be interested as a citizen to read about it. It was really helpful information.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Colleagues, any further questions or comments? Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
I will, but I'll defer to Mr. Collins first, who works most closely with this team.
Sure. I would just like to say that certainly it is a huge task, as they both spoke about, to maintain just our school buildings and a million square feet of space and all of the occupants that do come in each and every day. We are fortunate to have some newer buildings in our inventory, if you will, but we also still have older buildings, and things break down and wear out over time. And so the reorganization of this department, I think, has afforded them the ability to be very responsive to our needs. And some of the examples that were cited, like the North Shore, excuse me, the Parker Road roof, we had some problems with this wintertime, of course, but it really counts, and what people really appreciate, and what we really appreciate is the responsiveness, and they've been very responsive, and that goes a long way. And we certainly are, on the school end, also advocating for their resources, because their responsiveness is directly correlated with the resources that they have to respond. So the HVA technician that's being proposed for next year's budget and their budget, we strongly support as well. So thank you again for all the work that you do, and the communication, especially in your endeavors and the staff endeavors to provide clean, safe buildings every day.
And I would echo all of that, and also just emphasize again the communication piece. Angela and Keith came and met with our leadership team, all the principals and central office administrators, talked a little bit about what their goals were as they get started with this reorganized department. And I do, I've gotten already a lot of feedback from the field that what's happening with this new reorganization really is having a very positive effect in all these areas. So we appreciate it, and thank you very much, and would ask that, if possible, we have a very short additional agenda item before we get to our students.
Get on to that. So our next agenda item, actually, which involves you guys as well, is of course designating a person to be the school-based asbestos manager. By way of background, all public and private K through 12 schools must assign a person responsible for overseeing the management of asbestos-containing materials in school buildings. A bulletin summarizing the main duties of the designated person is enclosed, colleagues, in our meeting materials. Mr. Baldinger has attended the eight-hour asbestos coordinator LEA Designated Person course at the Institute for Environmental Education, and the superintendent recommends that the committee vote to appoint Mr. Baldinger as the AHERA Designated Person for Shrewsbury Public Schools. Colleagues, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, can I have, I will at this time entertain a motion that the committee vote to appoint Mr. Keith Baldinger the Designated Person for school-based asbestos management for all of the Shrewsbury Public Schools.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you both for joining us this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So for our next agenda item, we're actually going to back up a bit. We have a time-scheduled appointment of student recognition for some Shrewsbury High School state indoor track champions. I'm going to invite at this time Mr. Jason Costa, who's our Athletic Director, and the students we're going to be recognizing to come forward. And if you want to introduce us to...
You're going to introduce in two parts?
Go right ahead, however you want. If you'll just introduce us to our students being recognized this evening.
How you doing? So we're flying everywhere. We just got off the track. So thank you for having us tonight. Very special. I love coming each year now. It seems like we have some pretty good success going on at the school and to honor our athletes. So I'm going to actually, Reagan, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Reagan. I'm a senior.
I'm Wendy Marshall, the girls' track coach at high school.
And I'm excited to, you know, announce that she won the 600-meter, Division One State Championship this year in indoor season, and what a great way to cap out her senior season. I've seen her grow from her freshman year on as a runner at our school, and the hard work pays off. And I'll let you kind of talk about that experience, if you don't mind.
Yeah. Freshman and sophomore year, I guess, we kind of got off to a okay start. But yeah, I always knew running was something that I loved to do, and I set goals and kept reaching them. And then junior year, I kind of broke through and realized that, like, I really could, like, keep going and achieve much more than I thought. And last year, I got second at the state meet. So right from then, I knew that the next year, I definitely wanted to win it. So yeah, it was a goal since the beginning of the season I wanted to do. Yeah.
I've had the pleasure of coaching Reagan for the last four years. Reagan, you knew Reagan was good from the beginning, and she kind of plateaued a little bit her sophomore year, but then she came on really strong last year. Coaching her has been my pleasure. She really represents what Shrewsbury has to offer. She's a great student athlete. She's a leader. She'll be going, she'll be running at Trinity next year. So something we all should be proud of. I'm sure her family, she represents us all well, and it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
You know, just like I said at the beginning, it's just been a pleasure to watch her perform and lead our track team. It's tough, especially in the indoor and outdoor season, where we have almost over 100 athletes participating. And to lead that core of young ladies onto the track each day and then take on her own responsibilities, she's really stepped up. Proud of her, and, you know, it's a great, glad we were able to honor her tonight.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and congratulations on behalf of the committee. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Mrs. Consano?
Well, I just have to congratulate you. I've had the great pleasure of watching you run cross-country, and I am so excited that you're going to run in college. Will you be doing cross-country as well, or will it be track?
Yeah, cross-country and indoor and outdoor.
That's fabulous. Best of luck, and congratulations on a really outstanding race. That must have been exciting.
Colleagues, anything further? Dr. Sawyer?
Just congratulations to Reagan. We're so pleased whenever we have student athletes who are able to really set high goals and then achieve them, obviously with the support of their coaches and their teammates. And again, we're very proud of the work. And if you'd like to compensate the committee's hand, we have a certificate for you. And again, congratulations on your state championship.
Congratulations.
Nice job, Reagan.
If you don't mind, I'll stand behind.
I'll take things over from here. I'd like to thank the school committee for having us up here. It's a very special occasion to come up here and be recognized. So thank you for taking time out of your evening to come to the event. Also, thanks to Mr. Costa. He does a great job supporting the athletics programs there and creates a lot of opportunities for us that we're very appreciative of. And lastly, you know, I'd say our school administrators as well. We have a great extracurricular program at Shrewsbury High School. You know, the avenue that these athletes chose was doing a sport. There's a lot of other good options up there, whether it's speech and debate, whether it's robotics. There's just, there's many ways for people to get involved, and this is just one avenue that we've used here. Not able to make it tonight, but I think we all want to make sure that we mention our volunteer coaches that have worked specifically with these five athletes, Coach Todeikian, Coach Mortimer. They volunteered a lot of time, put in a lot of effort here. At the end of the day, they get a big thank you, and, you know, many handshakes, but they've had a big part of the success that these guys have had this season. I'll go down the line, just do a quick introduction, then they can hit their names. But starting at my left is Joseph O'Brien. I'm at the Division One State Meet this year, and he placed third in the 55-meter dash, narrowly missing, capturing the state title in the 55. He missed out by one hundredth of a second.
Yep.
Blink of an eye. But, you know, that wasn't exactly his primary event, but he had a very strong showing this year in that. And actually, the time that he ran there was one of the top 20 times ever run in Massachusetts history for the 55-meter dash. So I was building a lot of momentum going into his primary event, the 300-meter. And when he, you know, took the line on for the 300, it's an event that, having finished this year, he's never lost a 300 that he's finished this year. So he's had a lot of success, and he put an exclamation point on his final performance there. He broke the 16-year-old meet record. He ran the fastest time ever in Division One meet history. He beat his nearest competitor by over a second. And it's just quite the accomplishment. So it should have closed out a great senior campaign for us there with a tremendous state championship, and that ranked as one of the top 300 performances all time in New England history. So that was fabulous. Then rounding off our performance at the D1 meet, literally the last event, was our four-by-eight crew here. A little bit of an interesting backstory. They all, you know, they qualified, many of them qualified individually to run an event there, and collectively as a group... And collectively as a group, they realized they had a unique opportunity in the relay to not just place, but, you know, if they went out there and ran up to their capabilities, to potentially win it. So they, you know, passed up on their individual events. And they said, yeah, we want to go try to win a state championship in the four-by-eight. So the experts in the field didn't even mention the group in the top eight. So all week, you know, just kind of harped on. No one knows we're coming. No one knows Shrewsbury. Like, at the end of the day, they're going to know Shrewsbury. They couldn't say it when we first got to Patoni, they'd say Shrewsbury, but by the end of it, they knew who we were. And it's extremely exciting for these guys. They took almost 12 seconds off of the four-by-eight school record this year. They closed it out with a huge victory and, you know, some, it's a unique opportunity that they've had. You know, for the rest of their lives, they'll be able to identify as, you know, we were state champions. But more importantly, you know, it's the lessons learned along the way. Hard work, dedication, perseverance, commitment. These are all things that, you know, beyond just competing in an athletic event, that's going to stay with these guys with whatever they do in their lives. So extremely proud of the work that they put in. And again, thank you for having us up here. Maybe they want to say a little bit themselves, but I think I was the publicist today.
Actually, do we maybe want to start? I'm not sure we got everybody's name. Want to go down the line and just have you guys introduce yourselves?
Yeah, so I'm Joseph O'Brien. I'm a senior.
Tony Pacula, also senior.
I'm Max Evers. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Sean Daly, a senior.
I'm Cam Riley. I'm a senior.
Well, I'd like to say some things. So first of all, thank you for having us here. We really appreciate it. We had just hauled from Westboro to come here. But yeah, it's a very big opportunity for us to, for you guys to have us here. So we thank you for that. But I can't say enough about the guy sitting right next to me and about the other two guys that we have coaching us. We really love them. They're like our family. They're with us every single day, training us. And also just being some of our best role models that we can ever have. They're with us every day. They're, you know, they're just, I don't know, I don't know. They're like, they're like family with us, you know, teaching us life lessons and just pushing us to be the best people and best athletes that we can ever be. He kind of ramped us up a lot, especially me. Trust me, I'm not that good, as you said. But, you know, I wouldn't, I think I'd be saying, I'm speaking for all of us. But we would not be anywhere close to where we are without him and our other two coaches and our teammates collectively, and especially the people at Shrewsbury, all the parents helping us out, driving the kids to their meets and everything. We actually won districts as a team this year, which we haven't done since, I think, 2015. So no one in our school right now has won that, and we are the first people to do that in about three years. So that was a very big goal that we had. And I'd just like to say a big congratulations to our entire team for doing that. Again, no one thought that we would do it. No one really had Shrewsbury on their minds, especially the experts, as Coach said. But, you know, we really nailed down and got to the nitty-gritty and won a district championship. So I just want to say thank you about that and all the hard work that you guys put in, especially with the schools, even though it doesn't directly flow into athletics. It still really helps us out a lot, just, you know, throughout the day-to-day stuff. So we want to say a big thank you to you guys for that.
Yes, thank you very much for having us. And Joey hit a lot of good points. I think our success as a four-by-eight, and Joey's, would not have been possible without Coach G and our other coaches, you know, the training program that they put up for us and just how they inspire us day-to-day. And every single member on the track team, I think, the dedication that we have really helped push us, motivate us to do well in that state meet. And like Coach G mentioned, some of us dropped individual events to do with the four-by-eight. And I think that was just kind of showing, I didn't personally, I did not have any problem dropping my individual event. I had a lot of trust in these guys. And it's definitely a bond between us, I think, that helped us run such a good time and really motivated us to do well for each other.
Yeah, it was special compared to, like, as our assistant coach, Coach Garrett Todekian, he used to describe the four-by-800-meter relay as "the clown show." And we were happy to turn that stereotype around. And it was a really good experience to, like, work together with three other great guys. And we had, like, a lot of close, a lot of time close together and just kind of bonding over a week, or two weeks actually, when we were just by ourselves. And we had a lot of fun. We had a lot of pasta. It was good. So, yeah, thank you for you three and Joey. Great job. And thank you, Coach G. And also thank you for the continued support that the school committee provides to us, so.
Anybody else? All right. With that, colleagues, questions or comments for our guests? Mrs. Fritz.
Congratulations. I think it's always great for us, I say it every time, when we have students come, it really helps us understand exactly what's going on. And I think, Joe, you mentioning this bond with a coach or mentor. We want great education, but we also want to learn life skills, and that's working in a team. You're going to go off and work someday in a team, and this is skills that you're going to take with you. And having great mentors, we are so lucky in the district to have great teachers, great coaches. And this is the product that comes out of all that. So it's really gratifying, I think, for us to have this type of an event. So thank you and congratulations.
Mrs. Consano?
So I just want to follow up. This is awesome news and congratulations. A lot of hard work. I noticed there are four seniors. And Max, I know we still have you for a couple more years, which is fabulous. Do you plan on running when you get to college?
Well, yeah, I am committed to run for the University of Connecticut next year.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Personally, I might try to walk on to UMass Amherst track team, but I haven't fully decided yet.
I think I might run either at Bridgewater State or UMaine next year.
Excellent.
Yeah, running would be something that I would consider continuing to do. It's not something that I, it's a gift that I, that Coach helped us discover. I mean, I never knew I could run before during the track team. And yes, not something I want to just throw away.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Colleagues, anything further? Dr. Sawyer.
I want to congratulate these student athletes and Coach Gustafson. Again, for all the reasons they stated, these are really important experiences that our students have in their co-curricular experiences, particularly in athletics. And I think that, you know, it's not only the fruit of the ongoing efforts and the perseverance, as you talked about, it's also stepping up when the spotlight's on. And that's something also that these kinds of experiences prepare you for. There are times in your life when you need to come through. And I think these kinds of experiences, I know as a student athlete, that gave me confidence that when things came along at other times in life that were challenging, to know that you're capable of giving your best effort when it matters. And that's something that we're also very proud of. So again, congratulations to all of you. Thank you to your families for supporting you and to your coaches. And at this time, we'd love to have you come up and shake the committee's hand and get a certificate.
Thank you very much for having me.
Congratulations.
Great job. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Cam, sorry.
We'll be back.
I'll be back.
Congratulations.
What about us? We know you.
For my next year. Ready to go, Coach. Nice job.
I got that. Okay. Moving right along, the next item on our agenda is another time-scheduled appointment. This is a request by a nonprofit organization to hold an event at a school site with alcohol. By way of some brief background, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 272, Section 40A, allows for school districts to allow nonprofit organizations who possess the proper license to serve alcohol at an event during non-school hours with the approval of the local school committee. We have such a request before us this evening. I'll ask Dr. Sawyer to present some background information on the request. And then I believe we also have Mr. Jim Coughlin, who's a representative of the 1540 Connection, with us this evening as well, so.
Sure. And Mr. Coughlin in the back, you can come forward to the table. Welcome to the meeting. And just to update the committee and for those watching, I did receive a communication from Mr. Coughlin a little while, a few, I don't know, a week ago or so, I guess, and asking about the potential to have their gala event in the Shrewsbury High School Fieldhouse. Certainly, we're familiar with the 1540 Connection. We've had some connection with them through our health program. And they've been a very successful charity that's coming up on their 10th anniversary. So congratulations on that. It was something that we agreed to consider, and we've had a couple of initial meetings. But a decision we need to make relatively quickly so that both parties can plan. And one of the elements, as Mr. Palace mentioned, is that by law, the school committee would have to give approval. So although we haven't come to a final decision, as we're working with public buildings and public safety and all the rest of the things that need to happen to determine whether this event can move forward, this is an important step in the process. And it's one I felt comfortable bringing to the school committee, knowing the reputation of the charity and Mr. Coughlin and his team, Ms. Larson, who I've met with. And wanted certainly the school committee to be able to consider and vote this evening as one step in the process if we are going to be able to make this a reality. And with that, I'd be happy to turn it over to Mr. Coughlin. He can give a little background about the event and what they're looking for. And the committee then can obviously have questions answered by Mr. Coughlin or what I can answer as well.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and thank all of you for welcoming me here tonight and the 1540 Connection. Our family founded the 1540 Connection 10 years ago, so this is our 10th anniversary gala. And we are going to celebrate saving lots of lives. And Jay Leno has agreed to help us celebrate that. And as a result of that, many of our friends and supporters would like to come and join us for that evening. And we think we need larger facilities than what we had currently planned on. So we've done this for 10 years. We work with professional providers. The sound system is very critical. And if you choose to move and approve our motion tonight, the first thing that we would like to do is bring the sound people in to get an overview of the facility. And then we would submit that equipment to your engineering team because they have to do a structure evaluation. And if that gets approved, then we would be seeking to move in on May 30th and 31st, with the gala being held on June 1st. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, and certainly thank you for the work that your organization does.
Thank you.
Colleagues, questions or comments? Mrs. Fritz.
Question for Dr. Sawyer. When I look at the dates, the 30th, 31st, and a potential move out still on June 3rd, if there's more to be done, the calendar, the school calendar, well, the school is still in session. That appears to be a dual.
It is. And so the first people I went to, of course, were the administration at Shrewsbury High School, including Mr. Costa, the athletic director, Mr. O'Connell, the assistant principal who works on facilities issues, as well as Mr. Bob Marshand, who's the plant manager for the high school, and Jeff Lane, who runs our physical education, health program. Essentially, you know, the understanding is that if, we still need to work out the details of the Thursday. I know that in the past years where they previously held it, they've been able to move into partial in the space and then release the full space after school. So we may be able to have the benefit of some of that if necessary. At that time of year, oftentimes, physical education classes can be outside. So that may be a little bit weather-dependent. It's clear that the whole fieldhouse would need to be dedicated to setting up for the event on Friday. But Mr. Lane and Mr. Costa are comfortable if it, we will be at the tail end of the spring athletic season then. We may have some outdoor games that weekend. They would be makeup, they're not currently scheduled. Those would be makeup games for games that may lose to the weather during the season. If there needed to be some practice opportunities for, say, baseball or softball, we might end up having to access some other facilities in the area. That would, you know, depend again on the weather. But given the type of event and the purpose, all of those administrators were comfortable giving up a little bit of time just over that period of time in order to allow it to go forward. And so really, as Mr. Coughlin mentioned, it's really, and Mr. Baldinger is still here, Ms. Snell, doing some of the structural pieces and, you know, certainly from the 1540 side of the equation, determining if the space is going to work for them, for the quality of the event they want to put on. And then on the town's end, whether or not some of the elements of logistics and the structural pieces can be put into place on a fairly tight timeline. But again, we want to make a good faith effort to see what we can do. In terms of what's in the memorandum you have from 1540, of course, you know, what's atypical about an event is to have something where alcohol is served, and that's really the purpose of the vote tonight, that has to be cleared with the school committee to go forward. And in my meeting with the representatives, they're very clear. And as it mentions, there's professional crews and tip-certified bartenders. There's insurance that includes a rider that names the downer Shrewsbury and school department as additionally insured. And all the indications that I have, it's certainly, no surprise, given who is putting on the event, that it will be a first-class operation, really thinking about the details and making sure it's well-run. And I think that we're anticipating, as I understand from Tricia, that it's a very significant number of Shrewsbury residents who will be attending as well. So it's very, although it's a charity that's getting more national exposure, as I understand it, it does have a very strong presence here within our community, which is another reason why we wanted to see if we could work with them to make it a reality. So that's the information that I have in terms of the comfort level around the school department element of it. And the next steps would be some of the other departments making sure they're comfortable with the scale of the event and all the different i's that have to be dotted and t's that have to be crossed.
Mrs. Consano?
I'm wondering, for the community's benefit, if you could talk about the funds that you use, where they go? Because this is a fundraiser.
Yes. So we've developed an education process called Three Steps Detect. And it all begins with, would you recognize the cancer symptom? Would you all?
Right.
Well, if you took 100 people and asked them if they'd recognize a cancer symptom, you might get 25. So early detection is the best medicine for any illness, and particularly cancer. So what we teach them is to know you're great. So you got up this morning and you felt great, that's your great. So if you have a subtle and persistent change to your normal health, are you great? In the last two weeks, you ought to get it checked. So we're not trying to create hypochondriacs here, but we are trying to make people aware that truly, health is wealth. And then if you, when you go to that medical person, remember that you are the most important person in that room. I've had this body for 75 years, so I ought to know it better than anybody else. When I see that physician, I view a gold detective's badge on their coat because my crown jewel's being stolen, and I want them to help find them. So you must tell them anything and everything that you do with your life, even if there are some things you might be a little embarrassed of. So then they can take that information and come up with a protocol. They provide the protocol. You feel it sounds reasonable, you say, "When will I feel better?" And they say, "Three weeks." And you say, "And what if I don't? What do I do? Who do I call? Where do I go?" Just advocating for yourself. And as a result of that, we've saved many lives. A familiar name in this town is John Heald, and he detected pancreatic cancer as a result of having our education. And so the monies that we raise go to developing education and bringing that education, whether it's through webinars, personal seminars. Firefighters are a huge component. We've educated every firefighter in Worcester and every firefighter in Shrewsbury and 1,700 so far throughout the state. They're 9% more likely to get cancer and 14% more likely to die of cancer because of what they're experiencing in their day-to-day events, so. But long answer to a short question, we use it for education.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Colleagues, anything further? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion at this time that the school committee vote to approve the rental of the Shrewsbury High School Fieldhouse by the 1540 Connection to hold a gala dinner that will include the serving of alcoholic beverages. Per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 272, Section 40A, subject to 1540 Connection, also meeting the requirements of MGL, Chapter 138, Section 14, and that the Shrewsbury Public Schools administration determines that the remaining elements related to the rental of the facility for this event are satisfactory. Second, motion has been made and seconded. Colleagues, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I do have brochures here if anybody would like to take a look at them.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coughlin.
Actually, if you want to just hand those to Ms. McCollum. Thank you. The next item on... The next item on our agenda is a under curriculum. It is a report from our visual arts department. Ms. Pamela Blank, who's our visual arts director, will present information about the visual arts department, highlighting community partnerships and competitions and exhibits throughout the year. She'll be joined by several students who are active in the department as well. So I'll let you guys get set up, but welcome to Ms. Blank. And if you'll start us off introducing your student guests this evening.
Sure. Good evening. Thank you for having us. Pamela Blank. To my right here, I have Veronica Shinudi, Diogo Machado, and Lana Wang. Diogo's a junior and Lana is a junior as well. So thank you again for having us tonight. I'm a little bit nervous and anxious and excited all at the same time. So I'll get started here. And I assume I can just hit the arrows on the, okay. So we're just going to talk a little bit about our curriculum and do some of the highlights that we have for the year. And so this is a very full PowerPoint, and I'll I'll stop it when I get to the students. But just to let you know, you might have already seen, towards the end of the PowerPoint, it is the full program of studies that we offer at the high school. And I'll mention a little bit about that after. So to just kick things off, I thought it was nice to share some of our curricular extensions that we have. And this is a photo of a group of students in art appreciation who was able to take a trip to New York, to the Metropolitan Museum, in the Whitney Museum, in which these students will then be coming back and before the end of the school year, working with the social science department on pop culture and doing a project collaboratively with the social science, specifically around, after seeing the Warhol exhibit. This particular field trip, along with another field trip we have coming up in May to the Boston Museum of Fine Arts, was grant-funded through Target. And the one that we're going to take in Boston was grant-funded through the Shrewsbury Cultural Council. So we really support the the various different, you know, organizations and community members that that help us to just push our students along a little bit with the curriculum. As far as community partnerships are concerned, we have many, and it seems like it grows and it ebbs and flows each year, and we bring in some new people. But a few things that we highlight is the Shrewsbury Credit Union. In a few years past, we used to have a couple exhibits here and there, but for the past two years, we've been able to host, or they've hosted, three exhibits for us. And we've broken it out by grade levels. So as you can see, a November, February, and March, each time was about a month long, approximately 22 pieces of art from students in those grades, in which they then hosted a little opening reception night for each of the levels, which was nice at the branch. We do showcase artwork monthly or every other month here at central office in the school department. And I have my daughter up there, actually, in in Barb Malone's office with her piece of artwork there. So the little ones are always very excited. You won't get the high school students up here, maybe not even the middle school. But I I think, and from what I hear, it's exciting to see the little ones come through with their family. This year, we also worked with the Rotary Club. It was something that we did for the first time, where we had 19 art students, most of them from National Art Honor Society, who took part in a book cover design contest. And Lana was the lucky recipient to receive that honor for the cover. And it was a really nice event that they put on, just at the, seems like yesterday, but not too long ago for that. Just this past Friday, we had three students attend the Shrewsbury Women's Club. Each year, they ask our students to come and showcase at their art corner during the month of April. And we had two seniors and one junior go to the luncheon, spend about an hour talking about their work with the community and the the women of that club. Very nervous, again the students are, but they come back so excited to have done that because the oohing and aahing of their work, I think, they didn't believe me when I said, you'll have a great time. And they came back with the smiles across their face. So we always look forward to that every year. The visiting artists, that's something that we continue to build on each year. All of our teachers write grants to support our curricular extensions, as we call it. And actually, we had an artist come in today. Her name was Nicole Tamarin. She's an illustrator. And she spoke to the students about art licensing and what it's like to be an artist and the career and how that works. So she had a fun-filled day of speaking to all of the classes. And students, if they had studies, could come and see her, and she had her work there. I think overall, it's it's a chance for students to see that there is a career in the arts, in even though you might not be sure of what you're going to do. That is something that you take the time and you persevere. You can reach for the stars with that. At Coolidge, we are lucky to have artist and illustrator, children's book illustrator and author Ralph Macielo come back. And he's going to do a little extension of a mural, highlighting the big threes at Coolidge. So it's that be kind, help others, and do your best. And this is hoping, we're hoping that this is going to be a nice little touch to the wall, but with a potential for literacy and literacy night where he might come back. He might do something with the students there and maybe, hopefully, with some additional funding, get another little mural going or a collaboration with the students. So that's kind of how we try to pull our community partnerships together for Shrewsbury across the district. We take place in various competitions and exhibits throughout the course of the year. And and we're really kind of still hitting the ground running right now. It doesn't seem to slow down until after our festivals in mid-May. Starting the year off, we take part in the Boston Globe's Classic Art Awards, which is, as you can see, in nine through 12. We had about 15 pieces that were submitted to that this year, honorable mentions and silver key recognitions. Anna Maria College, that takes place, and that's actually the gallery at Anna Maria College, in which the secondary schools submit their pieces. And I know that, Lana, did you, I know that Veronica, you submitted a piece to that. So we really try to recognize our juniors and seniors, whether or not they're going on to art school. But they do offer scholarships to our students or the students that submit. We have the Youth Art Month that took place in March at Worcester Art Museum. And we actually had Olive Barber, who's a fourth grader at Patton, be recognized with an honorable mention. So that was exciting. Coming up at the end of the month is the James McGovern, which is going to be hosted at Lester High School, I'm sorry, Lemonster High School. Shrewsbury High School hosted it last year. And then, of course, we have our visual arts, visual arts exhibits. So the K to eight will be on May 4th from 10 to 2 at Sherwood Middle School, down in the cafeteria, as well as some in the lobby. And then we will have the high school on May 16th from 6 to 8 p.m. Going to maybe change it up a little bit this year. So we're always looking for feedback on how that goes. I think change is always nice, but we know sometimes it it, people get comfortable with the way things were. So we're hoping to get some feedback after that. The National Art Honor Society, as you are well aware, I mean, it was just, it just came out in the school journal. So I don't want to go too much into that because I'm sure that you had the chance to review that. But this was something that just really took off at the beginning of this year, from the two seniors, Zach Saint Pierre and Phoebe Gullian, where they really wanted to create this installation embodying all of Shrewsbury High School students with the emphasis on social, emotional learning and stressors. It was so successful. We are thinking about trying to do something next year with advisory on how we could start the year off with a whole school installation. This, a mini version of this is now at the Shrewsbury Public Library for the month of April, so it has traveled. So that was a nice treat to have it there and have the community, the broader community, be able to view this exhibit as well. Another part that the Black History took part in was the Unity. And this was another, to the left, was another project where we asked students during lunches to just come on up and put a fingerprint. And then the National Art turned that into a piece with Black History, just really emphasizing what unity means and how we pull our community at Shrewsbury High School together. The Memory Project, I know Dr. Sawyer mentioned earlier on in the year, how we take part with National Art of creating projects or portraits for children living in impoverished communities. This year, it actually ended up being the United States. This is the first time. So the children that you, that the pictures that they're holding are a little bit more of a surprise. So we can't really reveal the originals of them. But we don't know where, but usually, you know, it might be Mexico, it might be, what did we do last year? Do you remember?
I think last year's was Mexico.
Was Mexico. So we tend to do it all over, but this year, they actually have the United States where children are in the same situation. And knowing that it's a selfless act of kindness, taking their skills and talents that they have and really just brightening some child's day with with a picture of themselves or a portrait of themselves. So we've continued that, and those have been shipped off. We will receive a video once they arrive to those children. Usually, we get that over the summer and we show it sometime in the fall. But at this time, I thought it'd be more important to just kind of have our students here, talk a little bit about their experiences at Shrewsbury High School, and then allow some time for question and answer. So again, I'll have you introduce yourself to everybody.
Okay. Hi, I'm Veronica Shinudi, and I transferred here last year from South Africa. So I took art every year in high school. And I really knew that, like, I loved art and I wanted a career in art. When I moved here, I I wanted an art elective, and I noticed there were like so many options, like sketchbooks and mixed media and digital art and design. So I ended up taking mixed media and digital art and design. I took mixed media because it was something I didn't like. Like, in South Africa, we stuck more to traditional art. With mixed media, I saw like you could mix more different, like, mediums together and get better, more creativity. And the art teachers are really awesome. Mrs. Blank showed me a lot of techniques with mixed media that I didn't really try before. And then I took digital art and design because I wanted, like, to try digital art, because that's what I was potentially going to go for in college, to be a graphic designer. And I've loved it so far, using Adobe Photoshop and Adobe Illustrator. And then, yes, I did a portrait of my little sister in digital art. That was really fun. At the start, I didn't know what I was doing, but it, like, my teacher really helped me, and it turned out great.
You want to let them know what you're doing next year?
Uh, yeah. So I've been accepted to Mass Art. And, yeah, so that's what I'm doing with the Studio Foundation year. And if I don't continue with the graphic design communications media major, I might switch to architecture.
Thank you. We're going to move along.
So my name is Diogo Machado. I'm a junior at Shrewsbury High School. And the classes I've taken there are Art Intro, Ceramics 1, and Ceramics 2. I'm also doing capstone exhibition this year and next year. And I'm in the National Art Honor Society. I was really lucky to have gotten into Ceramics 1 my freshman year because it's a class that a lot of people sign up for. And I just found that I really loved ceramics from then on, and I've never stopped doing it. Yeah, so those first bowls on the first upper-left corner, those are bowls I submitted for the Super Bowl event at school. And, yeah, they were raffled off. Yeah. The other vase over there in the middle, I gifted my math teacher. And on the bottom, those are just minis. They're like smaller than your thumbprint.
There's a thumbtack there. A pushpin.
Oh, wow. Right.
You want to explain how you make those?
Yeah.
And they're probably like, so.
So it's just a lot of patience. I think they're easier to make than larger pieces, but it's just that you have to get the shape just right because they're like this tiny. So you need like, you need just like to not shake a lot. And you need specific tools if you want like angles and things. Yeah.
We start with a large mound of clay.
Yeah. And you need a center for that. And you just make like a tiny mound at the top, and you just, just work from there.
Cut it off and do another. So there's where the patience comes in. And Lana?
Hi, my name is Lana Wang, and I'm a junior. In the past, I've taken Art Intro, Mixed Media, and Studio 1. I'm currently taking Studio 2 honors, and I plan on taking AP Art next year. I'm also a member of the National Art Honor Society, which has been really fun for me because I've been able to make connections with other people in my school who are also passionate about art. And thinking about the classes I've taken at SHS, I think they're really a rewarding experience because not only have I been able to explore different mediums and techniques and think outside the box, but there are also so many opportunities for recognition, as Mrs. Blank has said. And although I have other extracurriculars such as speech and debate and dance, I think that most people in my school will recognize me for my art. And I think a lot of students would agree that it feels great to have your artwork displayed in the school. And especially in a world that is becoming increasingly digitalized and technology-based, I think it's important to recognize the arts. And I feel lucky that our school and our community is doing such a good job of promoting this appreciation of the arts.
So as I mentioned, from here through the end is the complete program of studies that we offer. And it's exciting to see that with the new courses that we have put forth for this year and the changing of the program of studies language to really suit the needs of the students and hoping that they're going to find something that best fits them, we have seen an increase in the enrollment or the sign-ups. So we're excited to see what the schedule's going to look like for next year with our new courses. So I I welcome you to take a look at that at any time. But otherwise, if you have any questions for us.
Excellent. Dr. McGee?
Several. This is a very nice presentation. I'm dazzled by the quality of your work. We usually think, especially with arts, we think in terms of talent, in the in the fact that, you know, someone has something that is innate. Can you comment at all about, do you have any requirements for people to enroll in these courses? Or can you take anyone and and move them to a much higher level with the coursework you offer?
Sure. Well, as we know, the the students need one semester of art to re, an art to graduate. But that can come from the fine and performing arts. It might come from the ITMs department with TV studio, or it might come from multimedia. So there's that portion of it. But over the years, we have really, as a department at the high school, looked to change the way in which students can make that path to success. Because they might come in just taking a Studio 1, have never, never touched clay before, and find that niche. And a lot of times, it's it's something that it's a passion. It might be something that they realize, oh, I, you know, I used to to draw when I was younger, and then I hadn't done it for a long time. So although we have our foundations, there's always that opportunity for one-on-one. There's always an opportunity for a teacher to come and say, you know, I see something in the student, or had you seen this in their sketchbook, not part of the the actual project. And those conversations, too, allow students to move up, and the flexibility of how we've changed the schedule over the course of the years has really allowed for students to take their own path and still be successful in finding what really works for them without having to be like, sorry, you have to take this as a freshman and that as a sophomore.
Are there admission requirements, though? Do you in any way test them to see if there
Most of the classes, freshmen coming in, they have about eight or nine classes that they can take that are no requirements. And as they continue to a sophomore, it might be that you have to take a Studio 1 before you get to a Studio 2. But we've also changed it for next year where it's a semester course and not a full year to allow that flexibility of scheduling. So there are a couple. So like a digital imaging 1, you have to have that before you go to advanced digital.
There's no talent contest before you get in?
No.
That's neat. So I have a few more questions. Let the other people ask their questions.
Go ahead, Dr. McGee.
Go ahead. Well, I guess I'm curious about access here. Do we, do, does the supply meet the demand? Are people closed out of these classes at all?
Some. I would say the class that get, is is getting closed out is our ceramics. I mean, that, that we have, the numbers would speak to potentially a 1.4 FTE as a primary, as a primary, actually, it'd be probably a little bit more than that, as a primary first elective, or first first choice. We only have one space for it, although you could open it to another classroom. It, you'd need more kilns, you'd be, it just space would become an issue. That is the class that that seems to be booming. But for the most part, all of the others, we we make it work.
Last question.
Go ahead.
How do you test AP Art? What's the exam like?
Well, the, the AP Art, we follow the AP rubric and the AP board. They have to have 12, the students have to have 12 pieces currently, in the way the AP is now. 12 pieces of a breadth section, which means a variety of subject and material. They have to have that pretty much ready to go before entering their their senior year or AP. And then during that time, the students in their course of the year create 12 concentration pieces based on either a theme or based on a material that shows growth. So growth in their thinking, grow in their, growth in their skill base. And it's assessed against an AP rubric that's specific. So our teachers, Mrs. Fox, who currently teaches it, um bases the assignments from what the criteria is for AP in the AP College Board.
That's interesting.
I do still think it it can be subjective, just like any art can be. So um we really push our students to think critically and think openly and and challenge themselves and be able to talk about their work um and defend their work. And that's the that's the nice part about it. But ultimately, it goes in front of a board and and how it it gets judged um
Yeah.
can be different.
But it but it's basically presenting a portfolio.
Absolutely, yes.
It's not how you were feeling the day of the test.
Right, exactly. So their test is the entire year and their pieces and their writing, which is defending their work. It's changing a little bit for next year, well, actually a lot for next year. So we have to get some training on that.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Wensky?
Great presentation. Uh congratulations to each of you. Very, very talented work. We've seen and every year I I do go up to the visual arts festival. I love it. And for those who haven't been, there's rows of our work and very neatly labeled so you know, you know, what level each of the students are at. I'm curious, when does the work for each festival start? Is that a September thing or?
Um yeah, so with the semesters, we ask every teacher, because the most of them are semesters, we try to select one, if not two. Depends on the the course, at least one piece from every student um from the semester. Uh as you get into a full-year course such as a Studio One, um we hold on to all of the work while they do in their portfolios. So around this time, we start working with our upper-level students to start thinking about what their boards are going to look like. How are you going to to um exhibit your work with the lettering, with your writing, um with a theme, whatever that might be. So we start that conversation now. The collection of work is starting from, yeah, at the beginning of the year. So as we go through, by the end of the semester, it's just what would you like to submit? And that's how we leave it to the students. Here's all your work. What would you like to leave with us for the art festival?
Excellent. And then just one other question. The community art partnerships, I I like the 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 ideas that you put up there, at least that you're working on with Central Office and Rotary Club. Do you have a lot of requests coming in from the community to have maybe students work on?
Uh we do, we do. And actually, the Rotary just reached out again that they wanna do something um with photography where it's kind of old and new photos. Um so those will be things that I'll field to my teachers who might be teaching those subject areas to see if it's something they're interested in. Um we get re- we get a lot of requests that come through the department. We cannot um meet all the requests, but for the most part, when it's community-based, I mean absolutely, we push it out to National Art or I open it up to all the students through Schoology. I post it with all of our courses. So all students have an opportunity, even if they're not in National Art per se.
That's great. I mean, we're always talking about the real-world experiences and that presents that to all the students. I also like the idea that you brought in like visiting artists to give students perspectives on a career in art or work.
We do that every year.
Yeah, right down to talking about licensing. I think it's a great idea. So thank you very much.
This is Kenzado.
Um thank you so much for coming um and and for showing the the work that the students have done. It was really moving um and so inspiring um that this kind of talent exists in the high school um and probably in the younger grades as well. And and that was my question for the students is when when did this um passion or interest in art happen for you? Was it in high school or did it happen, you know, when you were younger?
Um for me, it started at a really young age, so I took classes outside of school um probably when I was like six or seven. And in sixth grade, I started taking oil painting classes outside of school at an art teacher's house in Hudson. So a couple of the pieces you saw up there were from outside of school. And then that's how I knew that uh before even entering high school, I definitely wanted to take art all four years as my elective.
For me, I was also interested in art before high school, um although I wasn't um so invested in it that I knew that I wanted to take all four years of high school um of like art in high school. Um I just knew that I had an interest in it and I took Art Intro and next year I'm taking Studio One. Um but ceramics in specific, it started in high school because of their program.
Yeah.
And yeah, I was just really lucky.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Um for me, it was before high school, I was more focused like um like my favorite subject was business and marketing and stuff. And then I wanted like the more creative side of it and I still love to like create things. Um so then in high school, I got more invested into the art side. So now I do plan to do like cross re- cross registering um to do a minor in marketing and something like connected to.
That's right. Sounds like it would be good. Yeah, thank you so much.
This is Fritz.
Thank you. I think the work we saw in our report's amazing. I could barely color in the lines, so you know, looking at that type of it's amazing for high school level art. Um I really like that, like John said, this community partnership and where you're bringing in people in the art community to talk about how it can be a career um looking at ways beyond high school. And we wanna provide well-rounded education and without the arts, it wouldn't be well-rounded. Um Veronica, when you mentioned, you talked about having, you know, po- possibility of architecture. I have a niece who she was, art art was her thing in high school. She's a successful architect now. And I never put the two and two together. And when she talks about, you know, her work now, she's very successful because of the functionality of her drawings, but she's all, she would win awards in college because of the aesthetics. They weren't only functional, they were beautiful. And you know, these were buildings that people wanted to see built. So when you put that connection and then thought of it that way with her as she was going through that. So I think you're you're all looking at ways to take your art and move it to the next level. And uh thank you to Mrs. LeBlanc, because you're running a great department and a lot of high schools do not have this type of programming or the success that we see. So thank you for your work, too.
Colleagues, anything further?
Just my compliments. I've I've been to the uh art show that Mr. Wensky referenced earlier and it is just really astounding. Um the level of talent, uh really at all grade levels, but especially amongst our high school students, it is truly very impressive. Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add?
Um I'll uh Mrs. Clutter say a couple of things and I have a couple of things to add as well.
I just wanna say that I think, you know, we've heard a lot of of student success stories this evening and um our aspirations for, in terms of our community are really captured in the opportunities we provide our children. I I think um of of all those opportunities, I think um Kamal Blank is able to kind of think about the crossroads of what are the life skills, what are the potential opportunities and vision she has for future students and then what are some of the concrete skills within the content that she's passionate about? And how she brings that together and programming is really interesting. Um and it's always changing. As you said, she's really mixed up what's happening and taken a risk to think about some different offerings for kids. Uh and I'm so appreciative of her talent and her ambition for the department.
Um I concur. I I think that from the youngest grades, uh we see some really extraordinary work that happens. Building some fundamentals, been making sure students are able to express themselves artistically, have fun with it, uh connect things to the curriculum. Um I was always uh just blown away by what I saw where I was working at the elementary level and I still do today, of course. Um the uh and the way to see that progression as you see the pieces, if you go to the K eight art show and you see some of those fundamental early childhood pieces all the way through the kind of sophisticated work our seventh and eighth graders are doing. Um and then when you get to see the high school pieces, especially where it becomes thematic um and it's really not only technically strong, but obviously representing um some really uh deep thinking and and really connecting with people's emotions as well as just the beauty of it. Uh I I think it's remarkable. Uh and we're very, very proud of the program we have in the visual arts. We're happy to be have been able to support it. Um and uh that's something that I think is one of the real signature elements of our uh school district. So uh we were pleased and and to bring uh this so that's people who watch the meetings can get a little sense of this. Uh certainly invite the public to come to these art shows. What are the dates of the K eight and high school art shows this year?
Eight is May fourth and that's from ten to two P M at Sherwood Middle School. And then the high school is on May sixteenth, a Thursday, and that is from six to eight P M in the comments.
And if you have a chance, it's it's just absolutely stunning, the the quality of the work. Um but we, again, congratulations. We really appreciate getting the students' perspectives. We'll have you come up and shake the committee's hand. We do have some certificates for you
Very much for all your support.
and uh congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations on your book cover. Well done.
Great job.
Great job. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Good luck to you.
Good job.
Thank you so much for your support.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is under policy. It is a second reading and vote of the crowdfunding policy. We're not quite there yet, Dr. Sawyer. It is a second reading and vote on the crowdfunding policy. Um a first reading of the proposed new policy nine one four crowdfunding was held at our committee meeting on March twenty-seventh of this year and it was posted afterward for public viewing and comment. The policy's intent is to effectively regulate and establish parameters for use of crowdfunding campaigns for district purposes. This is the second reading of the policy. It has not changed since it was first proposed. I am unaware of any public feedback that was received on the proposal. Committee members or Dr. Sawyer, has anyone received any further feedback from the public on this?
Nope.
Um and I'll point out that Mrs. Kenzado and myself do constitute the policy subcommittee. Um Dr. Sawyer, anything further on this item?
Um I would actually just, Mr. Collins attended his uh association meeting today and it was actually a topic and ask him to give a little insight to what he heard today.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So um today was uh my state association, the Mass Association of School Business Officials, uh professional development, one of our professional development days. And typically in the month of April, it's called the Law Institute and we'll provide legal updates on various topics from employment law to uh fiscal-related policies. And one of the the highlights that uh one of the attorneys talked about was uh the surge, if you will, in activity relative to crowdfunding activities in public schools and some of those things that uh you need to be careful about. And uh you know, their their strong message was that um that school committees ought to have policies. So um anyway, it was kind of uh affirming in that regard that uh we have this uh in front of you uh this evening and all the basic elements that they talked about in terms of uh policy components uh we have in here. So um I think we're uh in in a good place with this particular topic.
Colleagues, any discussion? Dr. McGee?
I think the policy is well-phrased. The content is good and so I intend to vote for it, but I guess one question I have is whether we can expect to get periodic reports as to just what the scope of this is, how much money is being uh raised and how many teachers are involved with it so we can get a sense as to how it's affecting our faculty?
Certainly. Dr. Sawyer?
That absolutely, we'd be happy to do that.
Right.
Mr. Wensky? I'm a supporter of this policy as well. I appreciate the guidelines that have been put together for this. I think it provides another outlet uh to raise funds for critical um classroom activities. So I think we talked about it in the last meeting when there's only so much, you know, say the PTOs can provide to classes. This is another outlet. It's not a required outlet, but it's it's there if uh if the staff wants to take advantage of it, so.
Further comments?
And certainly I'm in support of this as well. I'll just comment myself that this is one of those things that it's going to happen. It's started to happen and it's gonna happen whether we want it to or not, and so it's better to get ahead of it. Um seeing no further discussion, I entertain a motion at this time that the committee votes to approve the new policy nine fourteen crowdfunding as written.
So moved. Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins on our updated fiscal year twenty twenty budget recommendation. Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins, of course, presented the superintendent's initial recommendation for the FY twenty twenty school department budget at our school committee meeting on February thirteenth. Uh they are going to tonight to present a revised version based on developments that have occurred since that time. So take it away, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh I'll get started and turn it over to Mr. Collins, but uh as Mr. Palace referenced, uh the budget process, of course, is dynamic and we're always responding to new information uh and uh as well as looking at how we can refine uh our recommendation in ways that will ultimately get us to the place where we can make a final recommendation, which will happen two weeks from now uh in terms of asking the school committee to take a vote on what they'll recommend um to the town meeting for the appropriated budget. Of course, we have lots of sources of of funding for our program. Uh beyond that, the the biggest source is the town appropriation and that's what town meeting approves every year. Uh but let me uh turn it over to Mr. Collins. He'll give you a status update, um talk a little about where we stand, uh and then I'll talk a little about recommendations coming forward.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So just to recap, uh in terms of uh the beginning of the budget process and uh where we are right now and it was back in early February, uh that uh Dr. Sawyer presented his initial recommendation to you. Uh and that was uh again in two uh pieces, uh so-called status quo budget and then also clear kind of uh resources that were needed uh in order for us to achieve our uh strategic priorities that are set before us. And when we looked at just the status quo budget, it was just over sixty-seven million dollars. A two-point-nine million dollar increase or just about four-point-six percent. And then it was a couple of days later uh that Mr. Mizikar, our town manager, uh put forward his initial budget um and for uh his recommendation for all of the various departments uh on the municipal uh side and also uh school department. And he had recommended sixty-six point two-five million, uh just about two-point-one, just over two-point-one million dollar increase or about three-point-three percent. And so we've got this gap, if you will, between those two recommendations of status quo and the town managers of just over eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Since that time, of course, we uh presented some options to the school committee um with respect uh to uh all of our fee-based programs um and laid out various options. And Dr. Sawyer made his recommendation to you uh about various um increases. And uh so those increases were voted by you and and those generate just over forty-six thousand dollars in additional revenue uh that was not assumed in the original budget recommendation. So therefore, we can lower our appropriation by that same amount and cover it with these increasing fees. And then also, um I presented to you a a budget status report on our current fiscal year and that we were had looking at a year-end positive variance of just about one-point-seven million dollars. And we're fortunate to be operating in that fashion for several reasons that I outlined um in the report primarily uh or most significantly with um fewer out-of district, out-of district placements for both special needs students and vocational students. And so that allows us to uh carry some additional funds forward, uh that positive variance into next year through the Circuit Breaker Fund. And so we can close this gap um of eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars between the fees and how we're operating positively now. And so that would be uh that plan to uh close that gap.
So in terms of uh the good news here, of course, is that the status quo budget that we'll be able to carry forward uh is is uh going to be able to happen with our existing resources. And that's a different position than we've been in in past years. Uh we are not going through the gyrations of trying to determine how to cut around the edges or even more substantively if if that were necessary. So the the savings we'll experience this year, we'll be able to um close that gap. And so we're we're not in in the process of talking about any potential cuts. Um that's a huge relief and that creates a lot of opportunity to focus on other things. And of course, what we're focusing on is how can we, is there any way to leverage some of the uh funds that we do have um to make some strategic investments and and certainly also respond to needs. And this slide demonstrates uh my recommendation at this time um relative to uh what we uh could do uh with some of the funding uh from that positive variance. And then the note at the bottom really references that essentially when we bring a line item budget to you um for recommendation uh two weeks from now, uh these different items would be in those line items. And what essentially is that the positive variance would reduce the amount of money in those line items that would be put towards out-of-district special education. So that's just a shift uh from the additional recommendation I recommendation I made back in February. Um the top uh four items were all things that uh we characterized under the category of other necessary priorities. Um the first three are intact the way they were presented in February. Um a seven-tenths of a full-time position uh for the uh for nursing staff for Shrewsbury High School. Um that position actually exists. It's funded through a different mechanism because it has to do with some special education needs, but we uh certainly with the enrollment and the the recommended ratios, we do believe that that's right uh uh continued, uh needs to continue going forward. Um and so we need to move that into the typical appropriated line for nursing. We also, because of the growing enrollment at the high school, will have more I E Ps, uh students with I E Ps that we need to serve. Um and we need to hire a special education teacher uh at the high school next year. That's not really a choice. That's just a mandated piece. Uh similarly, uh what we call a uh an E L C coordinator, which would be a qu- uh teaching position that works um to coordinate program to coordinate programming for students on the autism spectrum who have similar disabilities. We knew when we launched in February that that would need to be somewhere in the pre-catacly four range. Mrs. Belcito has determined that the most important place for that position would actually be at the preschool level because we have some growing numbers there, as we have students come out of early intervention. And so that's, again, another mandated piece, just to be able to meet the demand of mandated services. The fourth item there, which is labeled as a partial central office reorganization or staffing adjustment, that was a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar line item, kind of a plug line item that we had when we launched in February. Recently, you received a report from the Collins Center at UMass talking about the need for some additional capacity in different ways. We are studying that report. We're going to be doing some thinking and planning around how to respond to that. But I firmly believe that to at least start moving the needle on some of the required capacity there for some additional central office support, that fifty thousand dollars in the budget is important to include as part of this plan. The next three elements were pieces that of a whole range of things under the different strategic priorities we felt were important to put on the table as potential investments. And then since February, we've been working with the leadership team, working with the school committee on identifying what do we prioritize within those? And there's no question, based on ongoing conversations that I've been a part of, whether that's what the District Faculty Advisory Committee, which is made up of teachers from each of the buildings, the District Paraprofessional Advisory Committee, which we started this year, talking when we meet with parent leaders periodically throughout the year, certainly our administrative meetings. There's no question in my mind that mental and behavioral health is really rising to the level that that is something we need to make to be very intentional in making some investments. And so you see the first sort of strategic investment listed would be for the equivalent of three full-time positions at the elementary level. You see it's labeled as Adjustment Counselor slash Clinical Coordinator. The Mrs. Belcito and her team, along with the principals, would need to determine what the right mix of those three positions might be. Adjustment counselors are counseling positions that help students with social and emotional issues, behavioral issues. We have adjustment counselors, and we have had for a number of years at the middle school level. We haven't had them at the elementary level. We think there's a real need for that. We have two clinical coordinators for the district. They're board-certified behavior analysts. They're working with very difficult cases of behavioral situations with students and advising and consulting to teachers. It may be that we want to add one of those and have more capacity at the elementary level as a result. But the bottom line is we feel that we need three positions to start moving towards. Frankly, we could use more, but I think this is a good, important, strong start to be able to start putting more resources into that level. I do have good news to share because after this came out and was sent to you, we just learned over the next, I think it was late Monday, that we are going to be the recipient of a grant from the state, the Mental Health Grant, which is, this is through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We will receive ten thousand dollars for the current year, which we wrote the grant to actually expand our use of Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services consultation over the rest of the school year. But it's also for ninety thousand dollars for next year, and what Mrs. Belcito requested through that grant was for an elementary-level position. So we may be able to take one of those three and move that to a grant-funded expense for next year, which allows us to make, you know, some additional strategic investment, hopefully. The other, we're hoping to hear soon from the larger grant from the Department of Public Health. I know that's been delayed a bit. We're hopeful we're going to get some news shortly on that, and that would actually add a position, a program, funding for a position and programming at Sherwood Middle School, similar to the transitions program we have at the high school. So we're eager to hear about that as well. The other next little position also comes under the enhanced well-being of all, and that's to add six-tenths of an FTE to the Sherwood Middle School Adjustment Counselor. Last year, you may recall, for this current budget cycle, we had two-point-four FTE Adjustment Counselors at Oak, and we added point-six to go to full three positions. Actually, just had a meeting this morning, or this afternoon, rather, that where Dr. Jones and Mrs. Belcito are both saying how effective that's been, and this would do the same thing for Sherwood, who currently has two-point-four FTE. So that would round that out to a full three-point-o positions. And again, that we see the need there in terms of what the caseloads are. And then the final piece under this recommendation for what we should do beyond the status quo is for a science teacher position at the high school. That's related to space and resources. Again, we're having a growing enrollment. We're trying to maintain those student-teacher ratios, especially in the lab sciences. We have a retiring teacher who actually teaches half math and half science, and if we were able to get this into the budget, we could hire, add essentially a half FTE or an FTE and add half to each, so you can have one full teacher in each department. And so that's a little over five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars that I'm recommending be part of the budget. This would be able to be done regardless of whether we received a single additional dollar from a town appropriation, from what the recommendation Mr. Mizikar's already made based on state funding, or any other sort of funding that might come in. And so that's something that I would be asking two weeks from now the committee do, based on this current information that we have. As an aside, we did, the budget was released for the House of Representatives today. I had not had a chance to look at it in any detail, but I do understand that the recommendation for minimum chapter seventy-eight is thirty dollars per pupil, which is ten dollars per pupil higher than the governor's budget, which would mean approximately about another sixty thousand dollars in chapter seventy that would flow to the town if that's where the state budget ended up. Hopefully, the Senate will do even a little bit better, but there should be some more dollars, hopefully, that could be moved towards the school department as a result. The next slide, again, I mean, even if that's where we ended, you know, that's still limited progress in our strategic priorities. Again, we're waiting for more information, and Mr. Mizikar will make his fiscal projection, too. I mentioned the Mental Health Grant that we just became aware of. Hopefully, we'll get some more state funding that flows to the school department recommendation. I also do want to make the committee aware that just yesterday, information came out on students being accepted to Assabette Regional Vocational Technical High School. And although we have not had a chance to analyze the data, the initial numbers seem to suggest that we'll be a number of students below what we're projecting for the freshman class in the current budget. So we'll be doing some work again between now and two weeks from now to determine how that might affect what we'd recommend for tuition for Assabette versus those dollars being repositioned someplace else. So there may be some possibility there to make some additional strategic investments as well. And again, we'll make that final recommendation on April twenty-fourth. The next slide, we divided other strategic investments that are potentially, could potentially be made, depending if we did receive more resources, into three tiers of priorities, again, based on some of the feedback we've had in a variety of ways and working with the leadership team. So next on the list, essentially, we do see a very significant need for another high school school counselor, also in the past known as what we call a guidance counselor. Again, much related to growing enrollment as well as programming, and that's something that I'm hopeful, given some of these other developments, would be able to put into the final recommendation. Next, after that, to eliminate shared staff between the middle and high school, which we believe would be the equivalent of about two FTE. Some of that depends on scheduling. It might be a fraction more or less than that. But in terms of being able to decouple the middle school schedules from the high school schedules, would be very important in terms of being able to do some more innovative work around how we schedule students, what kind of program we provide, even the number of lunch periods potentially we can provide at the high school if we're able to do a little more of that. So that would be the next other tier-one priority. Under what we're determining, tier-two priorities would be, Mrs. Cloud has spoken to you in the past about creating a software dashboard tracking tool around high-need students, which we think will cost about twenty-five thousand dollars. We're adapting new science curriculum standards. We're looking for new materials for that. The, an adjustment counselor at the high school level, we did add one a couple of years ago. We believe adding another one is going to be important sometime in the near future. It may have to wait a year, but want to signal, again, the importance of that mental and behavioral health. And then professional development for things like co-teaching and inclusive practice, materials that go with that. These are all things that are very tightly connected to our strategic priorities, and we think if money were available, we'd want to consider those investments. And then moving on to our tier-three priorities, moving forward a little further with the central office reorganization and capacity building, adding some, an opportunity to engage a transportation consultant as we do the work on the new start times. We have to do some very significant looking at our busing approach. We're looking to fund some high school classroom projectors, like the one that's projecting here on this whiteboard, that would start phasing that in if we're able to add some investment there. Some professional development on cultural proficiency, project-based learning materials, and then social-emotional learning, both in professional development and curriculum materials. But what I'd call your attention to is the italicized print at the bottom of the slide, not certainly at the point where we can discern so finely, this one is more important than the next. And at the same time, we know that if things aren't able to be funded through the town appropriation initially, as things evolve over the course of a year, sometimes we're running under in certain categories. Want to make sure we're signaling to the committee and to the community, these are the kinds of things that if the opportunity presents itself, another grant opportunity, these are the things that we think are priorities to fund. And we'll be looking, obviously, at that as the year goes forward. And if you put them all together, tier-one, two, and three added up is five-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. I don't anticipate that we'll be getting five-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars beyond where we are now, but we thought it was important to illustrate a plan of things that we might do if additional dollars were able to come into the program in addition to what we know is already going to be available. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions that the committee has.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins. Committee members, questions and comments? Mrs. Fritz?
I think it's great we have, we're able to meet the status quo budget, but we do know that we need investment in our strategic priorities and goals, and so that is looming. It's work that we feel needs to be done to continue to move the district forward. So that is a concern. And I'm also concerned about the inability to fund a few of the items as part of the status quo, this high school adjustment counselor, and also the SEL professional development and curriculum materials. We'll be talking about a new position, and, you know, personally, I think, you know, we need to make sure we give people the tools to get the job done. So to me, that's a concern, and it's not a big dollar item. Thank you for moving the guidance counselor at the high school up higher in the tiers. I know I brought that up in a workshop meeting because I think that is very important from what we're hearing. That needs to be done, so thank you for doing that as well.
Thank you. And just to be clear, some of these amounts are to be able to do additional work in these areas. I mean, there's no question that with existing funding for professional development or materials will be, also be pointed towards these priorities. If we had more investment, we could do more and do it faster. So that's, I want to make sure that it's not, that nothing will happen unless we get those, but it's just that it will make it better and more robust.
Colleagues, further questions and comments? Mrs. Gonzano?
Well, I just think this is, well, certainly an unusual position to be sitting in, other than the override. This is the only budget season I can recall that we're not focused on tiers that require cuts.
Just a special gift for you on your last budget.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. It really is just, you know, we always have to be concerned about the future years, but I think we should all appreciate that we're in a scenario that is not as dire as usual. So, you know, part of it is, you know, we talk about this all the time, that, you know, this time things swung to our benefit, and in other years it goes the other way. So definitely, we have to appreciate it while it's here and know, and I'm really glad there are some priorities that are going to be funded. And so we're making progress, which is not always an outcome of some budget cycles, so.
Mr. Wensky?
Yeah, just to add to that, I mean, this is the first time in the four-year budget cycles that I've been in that we're not talking about tiers of cuts, we're talking about tiers of investments.
Is it nice?
I know.
It's like tiers of joy.
No, but I think this is, it's obviously a good news story. It's been a good news night with student successes, and certainly the budget, it's always good to see that we're not chipping away at things. We can actually look at investing in things, which is great. So, thank you. Colleagues, anything further?
I'm just going to echo Mrs. Fritz's remarks. You know, well, I certainly acknowledge that this budget is a good news story, and I'm pleased that we're in a position to make additions to the program. And as my colleagues have referenced, there's, you know, that is usually not the case. You know, this year is a good news story, but my eye is still, of course, on 2022 and the end of the five years. And we've got a long way to go before we get there. So, gentlemen, we appreciate the work that you continue to do. We will not be taking a vote this evening. The committee will be taking action on updating our budget request on the, at our meeting on April twenty-fourth, two weeks from this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that, and we will be making some modifications based, again, once we understand what we have from the next fiscal projection, and we'll look forward to presenting that and then, obviously, providing town meeting relative to where we're going and why these investments are so important. So I appreciate the feedback.
Great. So we will move on to our next item of business, which is under new business, and it is the establishment of the position of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Wellbeing. By way of background, this, the next few items are all interrelated to some extent and contain a number of pieces, and of course, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer in a minute to make a presentation. But again, by way of background, at our February twenty-seventh meeting of the school committee, Dr. Sawyer presented a proposed agreement between the district and Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union that would fund a new district leadership position titled Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Wellbeing. At this evening's meeting, Dr. Sawyer has requested that the school committee act in three separate votes to establish the following. The first would be to establish a new central office administrative position per policy two-one-seven. The second would be to approve the job description for the new position, also per policy two-one-seven. And the third would be to approve the memorandum of understanding with Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union that will provide the funding for policy nine-twelve. Our meeting materials had included a memorandum from Dr. Sawyer that provides rationale for establishing the position. I will turn it over to Dr. Sawyer to make his presentation, but I'll remind the committee that though these are three separate votes, that we will have opportunity to discuss and vote on separately. I will allow for a discussion of the three to co-mingle, as of course, the topics are interrelated. So with that, Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. And again, as you can see from the cover page here, the, part of the impetus was this, for this, and earlier presented back in February, about this opportunity for a partnership with Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union that is quite generous and I think will help us move things forward in some very positive ways for students as well as staff. But it really, as we've endeavored to do, we really try to start our work from what are the strategic priorities we've adopted as a school district and that the school committee has charged the administration with carrying forward. One of those strategic priorities right now is Connected Learning for a Complex World. You see the strategic goals, very specifically talking about building community partnerships with businesses and institutions and individuals to provide experiential learning, to provide opportunities in science, technology, engineering, the arts, and mathematics, also to help students develop independence after graduation. That's including exposure to career choices. These are really important things we want for our students, and we're looking for capacity to do this work. In addition to that, there's a very specific district goal that by this June, we were charged with identifying at least one partnership with a business, as well as an institution of higher education, and if all were to be favorable this evening as far as votes, we will have achieved that by establishing this major partnership with Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union. I also want to mention that, of course, enhanced well-being of all is another key element of our strategic priority. That includes the work around social and emotional learning and mindsets, as well as improving support systems for students as well as for staff, and around the idea of well-being, which is important for any organization. And so in terms of building capacity, there are lots of ways in which to do these things. You just heard a budget recommendation that's going to include several new positions for counseling, social and emotional and behavioral health work, directly working with students. But we also need broader pieces relative to setting the direction, working with outside agencies, things that people in the field working with students, which is the most important work, of course. In order to build upon that and provide support for it, we need capacity. We're in a context where we have grown by about thirty percent since the year 2000, but we have not added a central office leadership position since that time when the Director of Human Resources position came on board. We're a much larger organization in terms of what our, as well as having significantly different expectations relative to what we have to provide to the state, for example, in terms of reporting and so forth. Connected with that is that we're in the bottom seven percent in the state when it comes to per pupil expenditures on administration. And you heard from the UMass Collins Center report that that is a place that is ripe for investment in order to try to carry out these pieces. A year ago, I brought forward a proposed position for something we're titling the Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Wellbeing. The job description that you have in one of the items before you this evening talks about the primary rationale for that role would to be to add critical leadership capacity to achieve those strategic priorities by first building and sustaining partnerships between the school district and families. the school district and families, businesses, nonprofits, higher ed, as well as alumni, and ultimately, in order to enhance opportunities for student learning experiences. We also want that role to be developing partner and volunteer and financial support to advance the district's mission and goals, and then finally, enhancing social, emotional, and physical well-being of students as well as staff. Really critical areas, and in a perfect world, we could probably have positions that address all of those things, but in this case, this is capacity that we don't currently have among our leadership team to do as well as we'd like to do. And we think there's a lot of benefit for everyone involved if we can move forward and do that. That position was proposed last year, and I took it off the table pretty early on in the budget process because it was a year where we were going to have to cut around the edges, and it wouldn't have been appropriate to try to fund an administrative position. And this year, even though we're in a better position, there are a lot of needs, and we just saw the priorities that we have, that we're not going to be able to fund all of them. So with the support of Kathleen Cohen and Michelle Biscotti, who are coordinators of volunteers and development, with Mr. Collins, we did approach Shusby Federal Credit Union with the idea of building a partnership that would provide funding for a variety of things, but particularly to be able to bring this position on board without affecting the appropriated budget. We also have, since then, as I referenced, the Collins Center at UMass Boston, they specifically, when they reported to the school committee, had a finding that this additional capacity in the form of this position was desirable, in that they concurred that this would, this need for an additional Assistant Superintendent position to facilitate oversight of important district strategic goals and initiatives. Also, since last year it was proposed, this current year, a major national report has come out from a group called the National Commission on Social, Emotional, and Academic Learning. Their recommendation, the report that's called From a Nation at Risk to a Nation at Hope, is to align resources and leverage partners in the community to address the whole child, build partnerships between schools, family, community organizations to support healthy learning and development in and out of school, blend and braid resources to achieve this goal. And in that section of their report, they go on to say that this requires allocating resources to support a dedicated, full-time, culturally competent person who understands the community and the school district, who can manage and promote partnerships with the development organizations, as well as those providing health, mental health, and social services. So I share these slides to make it clear that although this is not a typical type of position that exists in a school district in Massachusetts, although they do exist in some places, this is something that's getting traction even in sort of a national level around addressing these needs, which I think people are seeing are really critically important for public schools to do. The proposed partnership, which we've deemed the Colonial Connections Program, would be a partnership with Shusby Federal Credit Union, who would become the signature sponsor of the Colonial Connections Program. The Shusby Federal Credit Union is committed to providing $400,000 in contributions over the next five years, starting with the next fiscal year. That funding would be then used to build capacity for connecting with businesses and institutions to advance quote-unquote "real-world" learning, opportunities for our students, very much in line with our strategic priorities. And those funds, in terms of how they would be used, would be to purchase a van, to provide student transportation, to off-site learning opportunities. You saw the slide earlier with some students who were, they happened to be in New York City for an art field trip for the day, but you can think about even, there might be times when Mrs. LeBank wants to bring some art students to a particular show that might be happening in Worcester, or it might be an engineering teacher bringing kids over to see something at one of the high-end manufacturing businesses that exist locally, or a bio class going over to see something at UMass, where, you know, we're looking to transport a smaller number of students, but be able to do that nimbly without having to plan something out a month in advance and the, and the expense. And there is an expense cost analysis sheet in your packet that shows that trying to do that by renting to our current vendor, this is much more cost-effective, especially, of course, if the van is donated through this partnership. So that's first, the first item. The initial full funding of the new Assistant Superintendent position in year one, and then significant subsidies that are trail over the next five years, that do provide an opportunity for the district to assume that over time. And then support for various events, speakers, materials, in order to promote some of these, I'm thinking, for example, recently, we had another reality fair at the high school for financial literacy. That's something with, there were tons of volunteer support, but there also were some expenses to get that off the ground and materials, and so initiatives like that would have some, some seed funding to get going. This is just a table that's from the MOU itself, that just shows how in the first year, $200,000, and then the amount of money would trail over time, over the next, over the five-year investment totaling $400,000, offsetting the position as well as providing, again, some of the funding for some of the different events and materials. So as Mr. Palace referenced earlier, we're requesting three votes this evening. First, to just to simply establish the position of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being. Secondly, to establish the job description for the position, because a district-level leadership position is something that the school committee does vote to approve a job description for. And then, thirdly, to vote to approve the memorandum of understanding to establish this sponsorship with Shusby Federal Credit Union. Their Board of Directors voted in late February unanimously to support the partnership. We're very grateful for their willingness to step forward and partner with us in this very generous way, and it certainly is my hope that the committee would see fit to approve that this evening, along with the, the position and the job description. I, I do think, and we've talked at different times about ways to, to really move our mission and our values and our strategic priorities forward. It, it does occur to me that the, the very first part of our mission statement says "in partnership with the community." And that's something that we certainly endeavor to do in all sorts of ways in, in the work that we do every day. But I think this would be an investment that will enable us to do some very concrete things that, that under current circumstances, given everything else that's on our plate, would be very difficult, if not impossible, to do. So with that, there's some information for you, there's obviously information in your packets. I'm going to return to my seat here, and I'm certainly interested, I'm happy to answer questions and listen to commentary from the school committee, but I do strongly recommend that you vote in the affirmative on all three votes this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So, committee members, before we proceed to our discussion, just a reminder, I am going to open a general discussion, and again, it will allow the topics to co-mingle as people wish. Before each item comes up for a vote, I'll ask for a separate motion, and there will be an opportunity to discuss each separately. So for now, just going to open it up to a general discussion, questions and comments. Mrs. Kenzile?
So I'd like to say that I'm in enthusiastic support of this position and the program. Dr. Sawyer mentioned, actually highlighted, the reasons that I am in favor of it. The first one is because of the Collins Report, and how it showed that there is too much critically important work to be done and not enough people to do it. You know, the fact that it's in the bottom 7.4% for investing in administration and 20 years, almost 20 years since our last central office administrator was appointed. I was struck by the number of direct reports some of our central office administrators have on top of their other demands, and I'm concerned about burnout of central office staff, and I think this addition will help alleviate the workload. The other two go in conjunction with students and preparing them for their futures, especially the work that we've done through the Innovation and Learning Study Group and the Portrait of the Graduate Committee. We have found that career awareness and experiential learning is necessary, and this role will allow for those kinds of opportunities to occur. The van especially is, will help us with that. I think that is a smart investment. And the focus on well-being, which for me is a passion in that kind of the children learning the social and emotional skills, I, I'm hoping, I may be overly optimistic and understand it's not a magic bullet, but if we start young with students and their awareness, that maybe we can prevent some of these behavioral crises we are seeing, even partially, that will be a success. And so I think this position will allow us to be more proactive instead of reactive. And so I just think this is really a fortuitous circumstance, courtesy of the Shusby Federal Credit Union, to provide students and staff with transformational opportunities and which align with our strategic priorities. So I am in, like I said, enthusiastic support of the program and the position.
Thank you. Mrs. Fritz?
I think this is the, let's start with the new Assistant Superintendent position. This committee has spent a significant amount of time and energy assessing this additional position in central office, and we've identified, while there's been an identified need for the position, we've also had to carefully consider the level of the position, the affordability and sustainability of this going forward. We just heard a budget presentation that highlighted there are many needs and priorities in the district that we need to invest in in order to reach established goals and priorities. The UMass report definitely highlights the need for the position, but it also highlights significant need for additional positions, primarily dealing with budget and data analysis, as well as a middle management position in the finance area. I personally believe that's something that we may need to consider sooner rather than later in order to provide necessary service to the district. Like you just mentioned, Erin, we talk about this new position to assist in implementing goals and strategies, connected to learning and enhanced well-being, but it also will allow for shifting of some responsibilities off of already overburdened central office staff. I also support the position. I do feel it's an ambitious one, and it does combine two very different skill sets within one job. During some of our conversations about this position, we talked about metrics, and Dr. Sawyer provided us with a memo in our packet that talked about proposed measurements for success, and I agree, it's a high-profile program, and I think it's something that we will need administration to provide feedback to us so that we see how it's moving, what the position is doing, and the added value to the district. We will talk about, I'll talk about the MOU, but this position is funded in a, in a different way. It is a sponsorship that will decrease over five years. So at the end of the five years, the costs will have to be borne by the appropriate budget. I think grants and scholarship, excuse me, sponsorships are great. They give us seed money to really do the things we need to do, but when applying to recurring and increasing personnel costs, I think we really have to think about long-term budget issues and needs, and really be mindful of any future implications for this type of funding model. It's great, but we do have unknown future needs going forward. And then on the MOU, I'm extremely grateful to Shusby Federal Credit Union. I mean, this is a really generous sponsorship for the Colonial Connections Program. It's going to allow us to initially fund this position, as well as those activities associated with Colonial Connections. Again, it's the funding of it, I think it's great, but we have to carefully weigh sustainability and long-term affordability. And again, it's a new approach, it's uncharted territory, the Colonial Connections, I think it's great that we're taking this initiative to, to do this and look at how we can advance our goals. We have lengthy discussions about this as well, and I, I do feel it should be called a pilot program. Once funding runs out, we do need to be sure the appropriate budget can absorb the cost of the program and carefully assess benefits versus costs. I do have a question on the van. The five-year estimated cost is about $46,000, and part of that is a driver, and it looks like a $20-an-hour stipend. Is it, is the plan, and we may be too early to tell, is this an existing employee that we'd be providing a stipend, or have we even gotten to that point?
So what I did for that cost analysis is to, I'm just trying to call it up now, but make an estimate that, that the type of van that we intend to purchase would be one that does not require any additional type of license, but just rather a Class D license. And so I estimated that a portion of the time, that, for example, if students were to be taken off campus to the city of Worcester for some particular purpose, that a portion of the time that a current faculty member of the high school would not be able to go with them, and that we would need to hire, or have a driver drive them instead. And so I factored the, the rate of $20 per hour, and it's not really a stipend, but just like an on-call driver, and made it, just built that into the estimate. So we'll have to see, I mean, I think that, you know, certainly, intent would be that we would have a faculty member accompanying the students likely on most of these trips, but I want it to be conservative in the estimating approach.
Right. You're not foreseeing a hire, an additional hire at this point?
No.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Wensky?
Yeah, so just to add to my colleague's comments so far, I'm actually very appreciative of the generosity of the Shusby Federal Credit Union. This is a significant investment. It, it does allow us to offer this option at zero impact to FY '20 budget. As we've been going through the budget cycle, I think the challenges that I've had is not necessarily 2020, it's the four years that follow that, right? I think, you know, being mindful of the other needs that the district has, and it does make you think about it over the course of each of the next four years that follow 2020. That being said, we, I mean, we, we do need bandwidth in these areas, I recognize that, and these are two key areas in particular within our strategic priorities that need leadership behind them to drive them forward. You know, and I think we've said it in previous discussions tonight, I mean, at some point, we need to start moving the needle in, in the areas of leadership, front office, and it has been, you know, we're talking 18, 19 years since we've added, you know, leadership to front office. But again, I think it's, it's taken me time to understand it more, how we were going to plan beyond 2020. You know, where we see on the list of needs, there are other needs that will go unfunded and will be there next year. There are also the other variables that we don't know about in the years that follow. So just, you know, it's taken some careful consideration to understand it more. I certainly think the UMass study definitely helped, you know, cast a spotlight that we, we need to focus on adding leadership and resources to front office, because that's an area that we haven't touched in a while, so.
Okay. I can say that this has been one of the more difficult decisions that I've been faced with during my time on the school committee. We've debated this more than just about anything else, and we've gone back and forth. I certainly have approached this with a certain level of skepticism. I feel that the, I questioned first the need for the position, then I questioned whether the job description was adequate or not. I'm very reassured by the Collins Report. I share my colleagues' concerns regarding sustainability, and that is something that time will tell on. And I feel that the, the need regarding the community partnerships and regarding social, emotional learning and career exposure, those needs are pretty well-established. The solutions, I'm not sure are as well-established, and I think we are, with the job description before us this evening, taking our best crack at designing something that is going to accomplish what we want it to accomplish. I do feel, though, that this represents new territory, not just for us, but for other school districts, and so it is something that the school committee will continue to have a great deal of interest in, and will need a lot of feedback regarding how well it is going. So accordingly, when we get to the point of voting on the job description, I intend to offer a couple of amendments.
Okay.
Colleagues, I'll just offer my general thoughts, and I want to echo a lot of what's been said. You know, Mrs. Fritz used the word ambitious, and this certainly is an ambitious proposal. Actually, let me take a step back and first extend my sincere thanks to Shusby Federal Credit Union for your generous sponsorship of the department. But this is something that we are going to be doing that we can't necessarily point at another district and say, "Look, they did it, so let's do it exactly the same way." And I think that that's a good thing. This is part of us being a leader as a district, this is part of us being a district that achieves and succeeds where others don't necessarily do that. There are going to be moments where we're going to be out there first, and I think Dr. McGee put it very well when he said, "This is our best crack at it." There is an element of risk to this, but I think it's a risk that I find to be well justified and worth taking. I share, and again, it's, it's been referenced several times. We are starting to pay a price for what has been many, many years of this district underspending in administration. It has always been our deeply-held value that most of the resources should go into the classroom. Every cent that possibly can go into the classroom should go into the classroom. And I think there are a lot of elements of that that we can be very proud of. We certainly have a very strong educational program, we've certainly done very well by Shusby taxpayers over the years. But similar to the situation with the overall district in lead-up to an override, the override in 2014, when you let something go on for so many years, eventually, there are going to be consequences, and I think we're looking at the capacity in central office with our administrative team being sort of a cake coming out of the oven that we baked a long time ago. So I personally am pleased with the proposal before us, I'm happy to offer my support of it. And at this time, I'll pause. And at this time, I'll pause, see if Dr. Sawyer has any comments he wants to jump in. I'll offer committee members chances to make further comments, and then we'll start working our way through the votes. And again, each of those we'll have a little discussion about. So, Dr. Sawyer, anything else you wanted to add at this time?
No, just to reiterate my thanks to Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union for willing to partner with us in this, and certainly appreciate the supportive comments just made by the school committee, and certainly committed through my role and the team's role to provide information relative to how things are approaching, because this is new territory in some cases, and in others will be just how we're doing on our goals that have already been set, and how this position is supporting that work, and there may be some things that are new and different, and we'll need to keep the committee and the community and the staff well-apprised of how that's going.
Okay. Colleagues, anything further before we move into the motions? So, the first item I want us to take up is that the school committee vote to establish the position of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being. This would be a requirement under Policy 217. I would entertain a motion that the school committee vote to establish the position of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are now going to move to the job description. And of course, committee members, we have a draft job description in our meeting materials. Trying to decide what's the best way to proceed. Dr. McGee, you had indicated some...
So you are presenting this for discussion. I would like to offer an amendment.
It might not necessarily need to be an amendment, given that the motion hasn't been made, so maybe why don't you outline your thoughts?
My thoughts will come, my amendment should come later, if we're going to add it to what's already in writing here.
Okay.
But basically, I had mentioned earlier that I feel that this is an area where the solutions are not proven, the position is new for this department and new in general, and the interest of the school committee is going to persist in seeing how well this is working and getting a lot of feedback. And therefore, I feel that we should have regular reports, at least annually, from the superintendent, dealing with the components of the intent of this position.
Okay. Would you like to offer the original motion with your idea incorporated as to perhaps not have to make a motion and then amend it? Or would you like to offer it as an amendment?
I think what has been presented to us would, is generally something that would be put out there for a vote. I would then say I would like to offer an amendment to this. We discuss and vote on the amendment, it gets accepted, and then we vote on the whole deal.
All right, I'm happy to do that. So let's start with the main motion, then. I would entertain a motion that the school committee vote to approve the job description of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded.
I would like to offer an amendment.
Go ahead.
Under responsibilities, I would like to add a report to the superintendent to enable him to report to the school committee, at least annually, on items referenced on page one of the superintendent's memo to the school committee dated 4/10/19 regarding the establishment of the position of Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being, and this memo is in our packet this evening. These things...
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Go ahead.
I would like to elaborate on this a little bit...
Go ahead.
And say that these items that are listed are in four bullets, and basically enumerate establishment and coordination of partnerships with community resources, and it goes on and elaborates there, development of systems to promote family engagement and culturally proficient practices, coordination of social and emotional learning strategies and programming for students, developing and implementing comprehensive well-being strategy for the corresponding programming staff. I would, I guess, also say, yeah, experiential learning is included in that as well. So those are the components that drove us to recommend this position to begin with, and it is this, our activity and success in this area that I feel we need to continue to be informed about.
Certainly. Colleagues, further comments? Okay. Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add?
No, I think, again, it comes into the typical responsibilities that I have to report to the school committee, and certainly to have the position report on what its focus is to me, so that we can make sure the committee is updated is certainly fine.
Great. Further discussion at this time?
So we vote on the amendment?
Yep. Further discussion on the amendment? Okay, we're going to vote first on the amendment. All those, does anyone need it repeated? I think we're good? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the main motion has been amended. Is there further discussion on the amended motion?
I would offer a second amendment that had previously been discussed, and that simply be that the job description be revisited in five years, again, to allow us to tailor this position so that it can be most effective.
Okay. Would that need to be written into the job description?
I would need the advice of Dr. Sawyer.
I think essentially it appears in the policy book, and I know that a lot of the policies have that kind of language. I don't think it's problematic to indicate at the bottom, so if someone were looking in the policy book to see it, so I think that would be fine.
Okay, so we would indicate as such somewhere. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Fairly self-evident, I'm supporting.
Right.
Intent is basically to sharpen the job description so that it can be most effective.
Excellent. Seeing no further discussion, we're going to move to a vote on the second amendment. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted, motion carries, so we are now on the twice amended main motion.
Right.
Are there any further amendments? Further discussions on the adoption of the job description, which will now include the two amendments we've just discussed?
Yeah.
Seeing none, Dr. Sawyer, anything more? No choice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We are now going to move to the third related vote of this project, which is the adoption of the memorandum of understanding with the Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union. The MOU is included in our books. Is there discussion on this particular point, Mrs. Fritz?
Again, it would be an amendment to the motion to insert the word pilot.
You could also offer the original motion and just use the word pilot. We didn't have, we wouldn't have to vote on an amendment.
Whatever works.
So in other words, if you'd like to offer the motion as printed and insert the word pilot as you see fit, we could then act on that without the need to amend.
Yes. So do I have to read the whole thing?
You would.
I will. That the school committee vote to approve the memorandum of understanding between Shrewsbury Public Schools and Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union regarding Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union becoming the signature sponsor of the Colonial Connections and insert the word pilot program to approve the receipt of $400,000 over fiscal years 2020 through 2024 as delineated in the memorandum of understanding.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Further amendments? Okay. We are going to move to a vote. All those in favor of the amended motion as made by Mrs. Fritz signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, colleagues. We are going to move to, and thank you to Dr. McGee, presenting the text of those amendments to our clerk, Ms. McCollum, who will show us the delightful time writing down everything we just did. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. These would be the regular, the minutes of our regular business meeting on Wednesday, March 27th. They were sent to the committee earlier today by Ms. McCollum under separate cover. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions? Seeing none, without objection, those minutes are accepted. We do need to go into executive session this evening. I would entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association and for the purpose of negotiations with the superintendent of schools, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. So moved. Second. Motion has been made and seconded. This motion requires a roll call vote to pass. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzano?
Aye.
Mr. Paulich?
Aye.
Thank you.[1181.83]